Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being video recorded and broadcast live on Pennfield TV's Government Access Channel, which includes Spectrum Cable 1303, online at pennfieldtv.org, and social media platforms Facebook and YouTube via Town of Pennfield Television. Following the proceedings, a video recording will be available on the town's website and on streaming devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. Simply search for Pennfield TV in your device's app store, and you should know that it is free. If anyone wishes to address the board during the public hearing portions, there's going to be several opportunities for that. And you can do it in several ways. If you're present and you wish to come up and speak, we'll ask if anyone wants to do that, come up to the microphone and give us your name and address, and then speak about the application. That'll happen after the application is done and the board has had some questions. You can also comment via telephone by calling 340-8771, or you can submit an electronic comment via the website at pennfield.org/live. Your involvement is valuable, and we certainly encourage any participation in these proceedings. And along those lines, we'd like to say each and every month that we think the town does a really good job of making sure that residents and other folks interested in the applications is aware of what's on our agenda, so that if they want to comment, they're fully informed of their right to do so. And you say, "Well, how does the town do that?" Well, some of you may be here because you've got a postcard in the mail. If you live or are property owner within a certain number of feet of an applicant property, then you'll get a postcard, and it'll say that this property is being considered for something, and it gives you a phone number to call. We've all seen the signs that the applicants are required to put. Actually, I think the town does, all right? The town puts the signs out in their front yard for them. But in any event, those signs are out there, so people driving by can see that that site's under review, and you can call with questions. Town also posts the agenda on its website, and I think here at the site as well. And again, we think it works, because we certainly welcome comments. So as I was saying earlier, tonight's meeting's going to be two parts. The first part is our work session. What that really means is we'll just vote on last meeting minutes from the last meeting. We will take care of any tabled items that we have. That usually doesn't take very long, but once that's done, we'll go right into our tonight's agenda for public hearings. We'll ask the applicants to come up to the table, again, give us name and address, and then explain to the board why the relief sought should be granted. The board members may walk the applicant through the process, because, as most of you know, you've each submitted very thorough written applications detailed. We've gone through all those, so sometimes we find it easier just to sort of lead the applicant through the process. But I don't say that, because I'm limiting anyone's time to talk. That's just the opposite. As I said, we welcome comments in that regard, but we do think that that works well. And right after the application typically, we'll take it under consideration before we start the next one. That also is something that we found works pretty efficiently. So I think I covered the intro, and with that being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, let's go to the agenda.
Want to hit the minutes first, or tabled?
Yeah. So, as soon as it gets done spinning, there we go. So the first, the second item on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Second.
And I think there was a modification earlier today, and that's part of as written, so we have a motion to approve as written, and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And now I think the first tabled matter, well, the only tabled matter now, is 3408 Atlantic Avenue. So if the applicants want to come up on that, because I know this was tabled, to get some further information, I want to hear from you about that. You were going to get a survey?
Yes.
Okay, so tell us what happened.
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
So the survey showed that the fence is indeed on the property line. We thought that we had at least three, four feet off the property line, so it's right smack in the middle of the property line. So we're just, we're going ahead with the six-foot variance request.
Okay. So I guess the reason you commissioned the survey was to see whether you could build up the ground, the berm, and therefore reduce the size of the variance request, but that's not possible, is what you're saying?
No, because he wants the berm on his side gone.
Right. I should say it's not possible without the consent of your neighbor.
Correct.
Okay. All right, very good.
And we've spoken about that, and I agreed to go ahead and remove it for him.
Okay, well, that's nice of you. Okay. So is the neighbor on? I don't know if he would, you've pretty much summed up what his thoughts are on there, but I know he was gonna, is he, does anybody know if he's on? I forget his name.
I'm here, I don't know, can you hear me?
Barely.
Okay, I'll try to speak up then. Yes, I'm here, and Chris summarized it fairly well, from my understanding so far.
Okay. Well, I think really that was the issue for tabling, so we have the info. Thank you for getting that, making that attempt. And we certainly did have a public hearing on this with a lot of comment, so we already did the seeker, I think, at the first meeting. There was a note that we conducted seeker.
No, I don't think so.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I think, if my memory serves me, we declared it a type-two action.
Correct.
So, let's just reaffirm that, to make sure. I'll make a motion to declare it a type-two action under seeker.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now regarding the merits of this, this is not, obviously, in my opinion, anyway, an easy application, because I think that the applicants are sincere in their requests for their reasons for this. They've shared their property, the neighbor shared his property too, for a site tour for the board members, so they can go out and see, and they did, along with some staff members. But if you look at the standards that we have to apply on this, I just don't think the applicants have met their burden. And two particular reasons why, I would say, for that. The one is that it's a very, very substantial variance. It's 100% double, the code says no higher than six feet, and you're asking for 12 feet. I think our research showed that we have never granted 12-foot, in fact, maybe nothing even higher than nine or 10 feet. But regardless, 12 feet is a very high fence. That's one. And the second one is, when I was out at the site before the initial meeting, it is just visually, it is a very high fence. You did a heck of a job, you're a craftsman, I'll give you that, but it's just, my initial impression was that it was, that it looked like a fort, because of the timber that you And you have a situation where, and one of the factors is, is it going to change the character of the neighborhood? Well, frankly, the neighborhood is you and your neighbor. You don't think it changes the character, he does. So, you know, I think on both of those factors, they're strongly against you in the application, and it's a balancing test. There are other factors, self-created, well, you are doing this so that you have privacy. So to me, in a sense, that is self-created, although frankly, most variance requests are self-created. So I don't really put a heck of a lot of weight on that one, but I do put a lot of weight on the way it looks, and now, to your credit, you've gone and got the survey, and it's right on his property line. So that, to me, weighs more heavily even against the variance, so I'll certainly listen to what my co-members say, but...
Yeah, I think, I mean, part of what I was looking at is, you know, if they had the ability to berm it up and reduce it by a few feet, I think that would have made a big difference in terms of that ability, but obviously, that's not, you know, feasible nowadays with the way, where it sits on the property line. And the other thing I struggled with, it was a lot of justification, was from the second floor, we're trying to get privacy, and I felt like, I don't know how many situations I've ever run across where anyone said, from my, you know, from an elevated position in my home, I want to not be able to see anything. Kind of, that was, it didn't seem to carry a lot of weight, but it seemed like that was a strong factor in the request, where, you know, typically, a six-foot fence wouldn't, you know, from inside your house, you would still see over that from the first floor in most homes. So I guess, you know, I didn't see a lot of weight in that aspect of it.
Okay.
You don't have to. No, the two of you have covered my points.
Okay. Well, having said that, then, again, I, my motion would be to deny the application for the six-foot variance.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So we don't get a variance at all? Or I have to redo this whole thing?
Quick question.
Sure. I can answer hers first, if you want.
Well, so with the berm that I built, it was 10 feet roughly that we, so we're asking for a four-foot variance, not 100%. But because we can't, obviously, use the berm because of the property line, then that extra two feet made a big difference. If, if the neighbor and I decide to put a little bit of more, you know, berm up there, and we agree to something that's reasonable to each other, from this point on, can we work together and figure out a height that we agree on?
Let me put it to you this way. You remember that we tabled this the first time?
Yeah.
To give you a chance to work with your neighbor, to come back with a resolution you both agreed to. And you tried, and as did your neighbor.
Yeah.
Weren't able to do it. Okay, well, that's life. But if you succeed in doing that, call Andy, and you'll get back on the agenda. We'll make sure you, well, the board has to take a vote, because there is typically a waiting period of a year, but the board can allow that year to be reduced if they take a vote.
Okay.
But, yeah, we tabled it for that very reason.
Yeah, yeah.
You didn't succeed, but if you succeed in the future, call Andy, and we'll deal with it.
Okay.
All right.
So where do we go from here, then? What's...
I think you continue to talk with the neighbor, and talk with Andy about what you do now that the variance has been denied.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, you're welcome. Thank you. I think now we're ready for the public hearings. So number one on the agenda was a public hearing that began last month, and it was held open, but since it's been withdrawn by the applicant. So we can go to number two, please.
Deanna Conyard and Shawn Roberts, 71 Arrowhead Lane, Pennfield, New York, 14526, request approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the Code, to allow an accessory storage building that is larger than permitted, under Section 250-5.1-F12A of the Code, with less setback than permitted, under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the Code, at 71 Arrowhead Lane. The property is currently or formerly owned by Deanna L. Conyard, and is Zoned R-1-15, SBL Number 124.17-1-15. This is application number 24Z-0030.
Hi.
Hi. May we have your name and address, please?
Shawn Roberts, who lives at 71 Arrowhead Lane, Pennfield.
Excellent. Thank you. So it looks like tonight you're here, looking to place a shed in your backyard that's larger than what you're allowed by code, because of your lot size, and then also closer to the property lines, because it exceeds three, you know, three, like basically 300 square feet is the, allows you 10-foot setback, but now that you've exceeded 300 square feet by 36 square feet, it now requires you to say you have to have a 50-foot setback, instead of the typical 10 that we see a lot of times for sheds. So one, tell me a little bit about the size, and, you know, why you need the extra 36 square feet, I guess, in a sense that that puts you over the limit for those setbacks.
Sure. I based, we're applying for a 12-by-28 foot. We base that on the amount of lawn furniture we have. I have my 60-inch riding mower, I've got multiple snow blowers, we've got just lawn and garden equipment, the stuff I use to keep the property maintained well. I've got boats, we've got a lot of boat equipment.
Sure.
Kayaks and bicycles, and just things that I don't want to look bad in the neighborhood.
And right now, most of these things are kind of left outside.
I have a small eight-by-eight shed now, that is just full, and there are items outside, yeah.
Right, right.
Wheat barrels out there, snow blowers out there.
Yep. And the intent is to take down the eight-by-eight, and then put this one in its place, in a sense, or, you know, close to its place, yeah?
Spot, yeah.
Yeah, okay. With the eight-by-eights, basically, you have things in the shed, outside the shed, and for the most part, you want to try to clean up your property, from what I understand from your letter, you want to make it so it's not unsightly and outside, so it's protected and out of the elements in the wintertime. And then in terms of the placement, with the width of your yard, I think you had like a hu, was your yard 103 feet wide?
Yes.
And so basically, if you need a 50-foot variance from the right, and a 50-foot variance from the left, that gives you a three-foot swath that you can actually set a shed in, which makes it difficult to place without some kind of variance of that size.
Correct.
I think I've covered most of my questions here. This one was fairly, the application was very thorough.
Yeah, so I'm going to just be blunt, is there any way that you could reduce that 36 square feet, say by 12-by-24 or something, to meet the need and eliminate the need for two of the variances?
Based on the amount of stuff I have, that's how I came up with the square footage.
Understood, but, you know, we could Tetris a little bit, maybe reduce the size in such a way to reduce the number of variances that were necessary?
I'd prefer not to, but if I have to, I guess I'd have to.
Well, so, one of the reasons he asked that is because our, you know, as a board, we're by law allowed to, you know, provide the least amount of variance that's needed to accomplish what you need. So also, so if you're saying, "Well, I could if I had to," if it doesn't meet your needs, then you wouldn't want to, but if it does meet your needs, then I would say, you know, you'd have to say, "I could make it 36 square feet smaller," or something like that, to allow for it to be less variances. So I guess that's more of the, I think, the question that George was going for.
Based on the amount of items I have to go in it, that the size that we've selected is the most appropriate to fit my needs.
And that's also because of the boat, and the lawnmower, and those kind of things that take up a lot of space for that equipment.
Okay. The only question I have is, would you describe for us, well, I have more than one, actually, but what's in your backyard, what's to the west?
My property backs to the Shadow Pines property, the former Shadow Pines.
Right. So, and that's actually the, probably the property line most affected, if you will, by the size of it. And have you discussed your plans and your variance requests with any of your neighbors?
Yes.
And if so, what have they said?
Yes. Number 65, Debbie, she's right back there, she's here tonight. I've spoken with her, and Beth at number 77, also Devin and Leanne at 56, I guess their house number is, because they will be able to see it from their back patio deck. And then 53, I believe, is Joe and Maraz, I've spoken to them too, because they should, they might be able to see it down the back of the yards.
Okay.
And there were no objections from your neighbors?
No.
Okay.
Okay. All right. I will just reiterate that if anybody out in TV land wants to make a comment, you can do so by calling 340-8771, or sending in a comment via the website, which is at pennfield.org. And I will tell you, we did get one comment on this application, and I'll read it to you. It says, "I'm hoping to simply observe and take notes. I am a social work graduate student at University at Albany, and need to attend a certain number of board meetings for a course. Thank you for all you do." So, I don't know if that's supporting or opposing your application, but that's what it says. That's from Kaylee Johnson, so good luck in school, Kaylee. But I'll, seeing nobody on the phone or any other electronic comments, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that cares to speak about this.
We've got one in your hand there.
Come on, is it, is this Mr.?
Parnell.
Come on, right. I was able to read Parnell.
Use Woody, I'll answer quick.
Okay, Woody, come on up and give us your name and your address. Is 116 Sawmill Drive?
That's correct.
All right, very good. Go ahead and have a seat, and let us know what you think about the application.
Well, I've lived on Sawmill Drive over, close to 35 years, in East Rochester area. Raised my family, watched families come in, they're big homes, they're family homes. I've watched people move out, new families change, generations turn over. And in the 30-some years that I've been there, I've seen the property in the street, Arrowhead, Sawmill Drive, and I believe Colonial, has nothing but gone to almost the prestige little area. It's prime property for families, schools, everything's great. But I think it's managed to get to where it is now, from the '60s, when it started to develop, when it was a dirt road with the developers, that by holding close to the codes you have now, and it's taken 40, 50, 60 years to put it up to what it looks like now, by holding the codes that you, your building codes and setbacks, you go down the street, houses are well-maintained, 99% of the houses on those three streets are absolutely well-taken care of.
Mm-hmm.
Go down the street, the front of the houses are beautiful, and I'm familiar with this gentleman's house. I'd love to own his boat, okay? I couldn't afford it, but I'd love to own it, okay? I don't like seeing his driveway, it's something I don't want to see. And I'm not sure if something like this is done, you would have to do it with everybody else, to be fair, one way or another. You're breaking down your, what got you to where you are now in this neighborhood, by holding the codes close. So, from the looks of the map and the size of the property, I have, there's people on Sawmill Drive, or the next street over, that have campers, larger than this man's boat, stored in the backyard. Storage areas all over Pennfield, East Rochester, and a marina down to the lake. You go by there in the wintertime, and there's boats, this gentleman's size, smaller, bigger, stored outside. So I don't really see any advantage of disisment to any extent for a storage shed in that area. My opinion myself, I totally against that, I don't think it helps the community.
Okay.
Okay. And that's just my opinion. I'm sure he won't want to take me for a ride in his boat after this, but that's okay too, I can't swear.
Never know. Never know. Any questions for this gentleman? Okay, do you want to respond to that? You don't have to.
My boat's rarely in my driveway, it was last week, because I was putting a new water pump in it, but other than that, it's in the water all the time.
Okay, and...
Stored in the winter in a storage facility.
Let me just ask you this, if this application is denied, will there be any, anything stored outside that you would otherwise have put in the building if it were approved?
No.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you, sir. Anybody else in the audience care to speak about this?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, okay, come on up.
Hi.
Hello?
My name is Debbie Freeman, I live at 65 Arrowhead Lane, which is to the right of the property. So I really am the one that's going to be looking at it, and they were kind enough to show me. At first, I was not. I'm like, what are they going to do? Are they going to store the boat back here? Are they going to do a driveway? You know, how your imagination goes. But after they showed me the plans they were doing, and where it was located, and they take excellent care of their property, so I know it's going to be a well-maintained, you know, building, and I don't have a problem at all looking at it.
Okay.
Just wanted to let you know that.
Well, again, any questions for her? Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Remember what I said before the meeting started, how we welcome this, we appreciate everyone's time. Okay. I still don't see any phone-ins, so, anybody else in the audience? Okay, then let's start with the seeker.
Okay, I move this type-two action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further review.
I'll second that. So we have a seeker motion by Andres, I've seconded it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now on the merits.
On the merits, I'm going to move to approve this request. There's a shed there already that will be removed. I think in terms of what you'll see from the roadside, in terms of this structure, I don't think it's going to have a visual impact from the road, because it will still be tucked behind the home. It backs up to woods, and the Shadow Pines in the back corner there as well, so there's a, you know, a fairly strong visual buffer there from that edge. You know, the applicant identified in his application that, you know, there's several detached garages in the neighborhood as well, that are larger than this shed, that's being requested, so there's already, in a sense, structures that are separate from homes in the area, to not make it out of character, the way I looked at it. In terms of the size, you can't, a shed of this size required a variance no matter what, in terms of, because with the 50 foot, with the size of the property, really left a three-foot space, so, you know, a variance would be required to be able to set it in place there. If it was, in a sense, if it was 36 feet, square feet smaller, you know, that wouldn't be needed, but when I look at 36 square feet, it's not a huge amount, but if you're trying to store something specific in there, and you lay it out, it either works for you, or it doesn't work for you. And I think we've seen that many a times, where people say, like, "I drew it out, this is how it works, this is how it fits, and that's why I asked for that size." In terms of any kind of impacts of the physical environments, nothing was identified in this. Is it self-created? Of course it's self-created, as most of these are. You know, if it didn't need a shed, then you wouldn't be here. If it was a smaller shed, there would have less variances requested. So in a sense, those are the merits that I looked at in my motion to approve.
Okay. I'll second the motion to approve. George? Yep, anything?
Nope.
Well, you know, I respect George's question, because that's a question that we ask often, and frankly, we'll probably ask several more times tonight, but I think you answered it, in saying that you've scaled a building to size that you need. Some people, honestly, come in and say, "This is the building we want," which is not always the same as the building you need. Those can be two different things. I think in your case, they're, they are the same, and you've demonstrated that. Regarding the comments from your first neighbor there, totally understandable, and the way I look at something like that, we had that picture up before, and you saw, I think, at least one or two above-ground pools, you know, not everybody's fa, not everybody likes, we have an above-ground pool, we've had it for years, but a lot of people don't like the way they look, okay. And zoning is something that can, over time, change and grow, depending on what people are asking for. So that would be my response to the concern about the neighbor. By the way, it is a very well-maintained yard, absolutely give you that, and, but that's, that's the nature of a zoning code, is if you see something, people asking for something over and over again, well, there must be a reason for it. This is one way to handle it, but another way to handle is to change the code to keep up with the times, if you will. And I'm not saying that's going to happen, I'm just saying that that is something that may happen when you see neighborhoods changing over time, but in this case, I don't see any detriment at all to the neighborhood. You got that whole area behind you, you have the neighbor, I think she's right, I don't know where she went, oh, she's back sitting down, most affected by this, coming in and saying that she supports it. saying that she supports it. So, that's why I would support the motion to approve as well. Anything to add? Good?
No, I'll be honest, if it wasn't for the shadow pine property behind, I would probably be leaning in the other direction. But there's a sufficient buffer, in this case, that it shouldn't be impactful to, to the other.
Okay.
So, that's.
Fair enough. All right, we have a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I should have said at the beginning of the meeting, we typically have five board members. Tonight, as you can all see, we only have three. So, the law requires that any vote we take in order to pass needs at least three people, whether we have three people, four people, or five people. And we have to have three to have a meeting. So, every vote we take tonight has to be unanimous. So, everyone should know that. Don't everybody leave at once and say you're coming back next month. But, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next application, please, Andy.
David Toda, 26 Greg Circle, Penfield, New York, 14526. Requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building with less setback than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 26 Greg Circle. The property is currently or formerly owned by David and Melissa Toda and is Zoned PD, SPL number 109.05-1-70. This is application number 24Z-0031.
How you doing tonight? My name's Dave Toda, and I live at 26 Greg Circle. I have a shed, I have a pre-built shed I'm looking to put on my property with less setback, would be a rear setback, I'm looking for five feet. Again, it's going to be pre-built, it'll look like the house. The reason I'm asking for it is, if you, if I have to go to 10, then my, it'd be 12 foot. I have, I don't know what you would call, I'd call it kind of a berm, comes down towards the middle of my driveway, and that's where water, springtime, a lot of water comes down that way. That whole, if you were looking at my, so it's here, and then it goes up on a hill, if you're looking at the shed to the right. It's really wet in the spring, doesn't really dry out sometimes the middle of June, especially this year. So, if I, if I go to five feet, plus the 12 is still sitting up on, I would say, a flatter ground, you know? I can't fill it in, obviously, because it would stop the water. So, that's why I'm asking for the five feet.
And then you'd have another conversation with your neighbors if you?
Absolutely. I have talked to the neighbor behind, he has no problem with it. We have kind of a wooded, I'd say, it's hard, probably about 20 feet of kind of wooded area. I asked him to come over, I showed him what I was going to do, or was hoping to do. He had no problem with it. He didn't even know where the lot line was till I showed him, you know? But that's what I'm looking for.
Great. Well, first off, the, thank you for the application, it was thorough. So, it was, it's easy, easier for us when we've?
Thank my wife, she's good.
Yeah, for sure. So, in essence, you're looking to put in a 12 by 14 or 168 square foot shed?
Yes, exactly.
Is that the same size that's there now, or is it bigger?
No. So, the other one was 14 by 10. The other, the shed that was there previous.
Okay, so you're talking another 30 square feet of shed space?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'm going a little bigger because, you know, I have stuff to put in there, like everybody, plus I have more grandkid toys than I ever had with my own kids. So, that's what goes in there. You know, just, I thought, a little bit bigger lawnmower goes in there typically, end of the season. Just storing stuff in there. It'll have no electricity, you know, just a, just a basic shed, to be honest.
Yeah, well, the rendering does indicate it's going to look like the house, and so obviously, you're looking to?
Yeah.
Maintain a view and a look.
Yeah.
There is a, there is a strip of woods, I noticed, towards the back, which seemed to offer a buffer behind?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. I don't have a ton of questions. There's a couple of things I am going to run through, but I want to make sure if the other two folks have any questions?
No, go ahead, Stroh, go ahead.
Gotcha. All right, so, some of the questions that we generally ask ourselves around here is, will the character of the neighborhood be changed by this? No, there's a tree line that'll block the view on there. And the storage shed aesthetics will match the house, so there shouldn't be any concern. You've spoken to your neighbor, which is always good.
Yep.
That way, we verify that the neighbor's happy with that. Can the benefit be achieved in some other fashion? In other words, though you didn't require it, yes, but that would require cutting down trees in order to be able to move that?
Exactly.
And the, because of the swell in the yard, that limits where you can actually put the shed. So, you not, you really couldn't without?
It would be very hard to do much, you know, to get it to fit within?
Gotcha. So, the other question we ask ourselves is, is this substantial? It kind of is, because it is, it is, you know, 50% of the overall distance. But based on what your other elements you've talked about, it's understood and why you would need that. Will it have a diverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions? No, but if you moved it into the swell, it very well could.
Right, exactly.
Negative, yep. Got it. Is this self-created? Technically, yes, you're putting in another shed, so you're creating it the situation. I do understand that the other shed was there before, but still, we do kind of?
The thing is, the other shed was over the property line. When I first moved in, it was all, you know, it was cows back there. Farming. You know, whoever built the shed was there when I bought the house. Never did I know it was over. And it was over a cup, about three inches, so.
Gotcha. So, again, you know, the, everything, all the information that we would need was in the application, and your explanation as to what you're looking to do makes sense. I don't have any additional questions unless you guys do?
No, I think you covered it as well.
Yeah. Great. So, I'll start with the seeker, then?
Well, let me ask if anyone?
Good question.
Yeah, I don't see anybody that's called in on this one or submitted an electronic comment, so I'll open it up to anyone here. Want to speak about this application? No, okay. Have at it, George.
Gotcha. So, I would say, this is a, as far as seeker goes, this is a type 2, requiring no further action?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a seeker motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, go to the merits.
All right, well, you know, if the merits, based on some of the limitations that he has with the property and the need for some additional storage and tree line, as well as the conversation with the neighbor, I would say that I would approve this. There are a few things that I'm going to kind of walk through that I believe are conditions. The applicant's permitted to construct the 12 by 14 accessory storage building. As the plans that were submitted in the application, the storage building is approved for a variance of five feet from the minimum of the 10-foot setback required by the code, resulting in, in essence, a five foot from the rear or north of the property line. The applicant shall obtain a building permit for the construction of said storage shed, following all the town zoning codes and whatnot. The applicant shall, upon completion of the construction and installation of the storage building, obtain a certificate of compliance from the Penfield Building and Zoning, and Andy can help you with that. The applicant shall comply with all applicable requirements of New York State Uniform Fire Prevention Building Code, New York State Energy Conservation Construction Code, Penfield Town Code, and any other applicable county, state, or federal requirements. And yes, that is a mouthful. So, with that all being said, I would approve, make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve for the reasons stated, and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Good luck, good seeing you. All right, moving right along, number four, Timberline.
Michael Shidi, 2 Timberline Drive, Penfield, New York, 14526. Requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building with less setback than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 2 Timberline Drive. The property is currently or formerly owned by Michael and Lisa Shidi and is Zoned RR-1-20, SPL number 109.05-1-19. This is application number 24Z-0032.
Could we have your name and?
Good evening, Michael Shidi, 2 Timberline Drive, Penfield, New York.
Great. First and foremost, thank you so much. The application was thorough, all the details were there. It makes this much easier when we have all the information. So, my understanding is, is that you are proposing to the installation of a 12 by 23.5 or 282 square foot storage facility. And what you're asking for, from a variance perspective, is because of a easement for water on the property, you would need a 1.8 variance from the normally stated 10-foot by code. So, that means you would only be 1.9, 1 foot 9 inches from the west side of the property?
Approximately 2.
Is that correct? Okay, gotcha. Okay, so, obviously, the drainage easement is a challenge for you, but I am going to ask, is there any way that you could either slightly reduce the size of the shed, perhaps?
I did reduce the size of the shed from the original. I wanted a 24-foot, but in order to comply with the square footage, I reduced it to 23 and 1/2 to avoid a second variance.
All right, perfect, okay, thank you. And there's, even with the, with the easement, is there any way to reorient this, and any way to be able to kind of limit not needing to be quite so close? It's, this is a huge variance, so.
The shed that's existing right now is at 1.9 feet from the property line, at which the backside of it backs up to bushes and shrubberies from my neighbor's yard. My neighbor, who I have spoken with, does not have any issues with the placement of the shed, as there is an existing shed and a fence enclosure that is attached to the shed that stores.
Gotcha. And I also noted you did have a pool in that yard as well, so that also limits?
There is a pool.
Oh, and an above-ground pool?
Above-ground pool. And by physically moving it in further, it would actually obstruct being able to mow and get to the pool equipment.
You, you read my mind, that was my next question. Okay, excellent. So, the other question came up, do you indicate a fence enclosure? And I was trying to see where that is in relation to the shed?
It's, literally has the blue kind of tarp over the top of it there in the picture. It's the, it's at the far end of that. It looks like it's a dog-eared fence.
Gotcha. So, what is that going to look like after you?
That's all going to be removed.
Gotcha, okay. Then that was, that was my other question, is what would be the, whether that would continue to be used and extended? Okay.
So, technically, the area that, of the shed and the fence enclosure is approximately eight feet by 18 feet currently. So, the shed that I'm requesting isn't much larger than that. And was shown in pictures, it was stakeouts in the ground to show where it would fall with regards to that.
And you did indicate you have spoken to the neighbor that would be?
I haven't.
Most impacted. Have you spoken to the neighbors on either other side?
There really isn't another side. I'm on a corner of the street, so it's, the one neighbor I have is the one that directly would be affected.
Okay, those are my questions. Dan, or?
What are you going to use it for?
Storing pool equipment, lawn furniture, snow blowers, riding lawnmower, various items, my grandson's toys as well.
Okay. I'm sensing a theme here with the toys.
Yeah, I thought they only needed an iPhone, and they were all set nowadays, but I guess I'm wrong about that.
Only for a short period of time.
Yeah. I don't see any call-ins or electronic comments here, so I'll ask anyone in the audience care to speak about this. Okay, let's go to the seeker.
Okay, and in regards to seeker, I would say this is a type 2, requiring no further action?
I'll second.
Okay, motion to declare it a type 2, and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then on the merits?
Gotcha. So, you know, this is, this is, of course, self-created, and everybody would like to think, well, no, not really. But if you're putting in a new shed or changing a shed, it is somewhat self-created. However, there are some extenuating circumstances here. The pool and the, and the easement both come into play. You have made a good, a good, you've given us good understanding of why you need the larger space for additional storage and things like that. The aesthetics will certainly match the neighborhood in the house, so they would stand out. I'm going to go through just a couple of same items I did earlier, but I'm, you know, at this point, going to recommend approval with some following conditions, that you will obtain your permit. When you, once it's installed, you will follow up, and, and, once it's done, you'll, upon completion, you'll obtain the certificate of compliance. And you, of course, will follow all the rules for all those organizations I indicated earlier, from the state, local, and federal.
Absolutely.
Great. So, with that, I would recommend approval.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve, and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Next application, please, Andy.
Deborah Wispyansky, 1869 Dublin Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. Requests approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a second accessory storage building, whereas a maximum of one accessory storage building is permitted under Section 250-5.1-D4 of the code, and an existing accessory storage building with less setback than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 1869 Dublin Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Deborah Wispyansky and is Zoned RR-1, SPL number 125.01-1-20. This is application number 24Z-0034.
Hi, just gave your name and address for the record?
Deborah Wispyansky, 1869 Dublin Road, Penfield, New York, 14526.
Thank you. So, you're here for two requests. One, you have an existing shed that you went through the process, got a building permit, it's been there for 10-plus years, I think?
I didn't get any permits for it. It was there?
Previous owner?
It's 15 years old, the previous did. But apparently, they didn't get a variance, so somebody didn't?
In a sense, it was, it was constructed too close to the property line from where it is right now, but they went through the proper steps to get it, and it got approved and those things. So, that's been there for a long time, and from the looks of it, probably would not be able to be moved very easily without potentially ruining it. And so, you're looking to get a variance for that. And then, you're also looking to have additional storage by placing a second shed behind that one?
Yes.
Which would not require a variance, because it would be off the property line far enough for that.
I wanted to build it in line with it so that it would stay behind it, but I was told that it would be best not to do too many variances.
Correct, yeah, no, I think that makes sense. And then, to the rear view is basically, I'll say, undeveloped, it's farmland. That's, that's from Wickham Farms. And actually, Bill Wickham sent a letter in support that he had no, no concerns with the application, which that has a lot of strength, because in a sense, he's your neighbor to the rear, he's your neighbor to the side. And so, that's, in a sense, two areas where I think that would be closest impacted by that are from, you know, his, his property.
The only reason I didn't ask him specifically is because he already builds corn in between to kind of block view. He built up a berm, and there's a drainage area.
Okay, all right. So, in terms of the visual impact, it's very minimal for this as well. The reason for the second shed, it looked like, from what I could tell, there's a bunch of stuff outside already. Would, would most of that stuff, or all of it, be going into the shed?
Yes.
And that's kind of, in a sense, to take it from the outside and put it?
Yes, I'm tired of it all straggled around my yard.
Yes.
My, my business actually takes up a lot of the room, and our garage is so small that it's hardly usable for, I wouldn't even be able to park my van in it even if I wanted to.
Okay.
So, it's mainly for yard storage, my motorcycle, the riding and the push mower, the wheelbarrows, and all the other things that we do. We're always doing projects, so we do a lot of things.
And I believe you said in your application, your garage is a, is a single-car garage too, so it's already limited compared to?
I would, yeah. I would have a hard time opening doors in my van if I parked it in the garage and made it completely almost empty.
Got it. And then, to the shed in the rear, there won't be any electricity or lights or?
No.
Things like that in the back as well?
Okay.
That's all I have for questions.
George?
No, I'm good.
The current shed, how old is that?
15 years, apparently.
And in, as far as you say, is in good shape, still working as well? Okay, some might?
Might need a paint job soon and a few painting tiles, but otherwise, it's in really good condition.
Yeah, I mean, some may say, why don't you knock it down and build a bigger one? But it's in good shape, it still works?
I like it. I actually would love to build a second one the same way in a barn style, but I don't think I can afford to, so.
Right. Okay, I don't see any phone, thank you. I don't see any phone calls, I don't see any electronic submissions on this. So, I will ask, anyone in the audience care to speak about this? No, okay. Then let's move to the seeker.
Okay, I move this to type 2 action under seeker, requiring no further review.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on seeker to declare it a type 2, and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, on to the merits. I'm going to move to approve the requested variances. In terms of undesirable change, that, from what I could tell, there was nothing that was identified that would make this an undesirable change. The front of the home will be blocking the view, the existing shed will be blocking the view of the? Um, the front of the home will be blocking the view, the existing shed will be blocking the view, um, of the second one. The rear, or the north side of the property is, is farm fields. Um, the rear, so in a sense, it's, it's buffered, um, by farm fields and the property owner of the, of, uh, Bill Wickham said that's not a concern, so for having this, so I think that carries a lot of weight. Could it be achieved otherwise? Um, but from the application standpoint, they said no. Uh, with this, you know, single-vehicle garage, there's barely enough room to park a vehicle in and all the additional, uh, equipment for the property, they really need someplace to get this stuff inside and, um, out of sight. And so I think, you know, from that, they're, you know, since trying to consolidate will help this, uh, property as well. Um, is it substantial? Um, not, not really, no. I think the additional set, the shed's not large. 120 square feet's not a, you know, a, a very large shed from what we've, you know, usually see here at the board. When I said, I think back in the day, 192 square feet used to be the standard that you could build to without even getting a variance. So it's already below that, uh, as well. Um, I think, uh, versus for physical environmental impacts, uh, none were identified, um, from the application. Uh, is it self-created? Yes, but I think, uh, anything here is self-created, uh, for the second shed. But the variance for the existing shed was not self-created because that was already pre-existing when the property was purchased. So the property owner is actually trying to bring it into compliance.
Good point, yeah.
For that, I'll move to approve.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion to approve, I'll second that. Um, any further comment? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next application, please.
Michael Beal, 1421 Penfield Center Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. Requests approval for area variances under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building that is larger than the principal structure, as required by section 250-2.2 of the code, with less setback than permitted under section 250-5.1-f12B of the code at 1421 Penfield Center Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Michael and Julie Beal and is owned RA-2, SBL number 110.04-1-2.2. This is application number 24Z-0035.
Hi, if you'd give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, Michael Beal, 1421 Penfield Center Road, Penfield, New York, 14526.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so you are not here for a second accessory structure, you are here to make your current accessory structure larger.
Correct.
Um, and in doing so, it would exceed the square footage of your residency. And so the town code says, any secondary structure needs to be the same size or smaller, and so you're here for a variance for that. And then I believe we're also looking for a, you want to put this, the extension of this now would put it 16-foot from the property line is what we believe.
Correct.
And so you're looking for a 34-foot variance from the 50-foot required, um, from the side of your property.
Correct.
Okay. Um, I, tell us a little bit about, um, I saw it in, in your application, it sounds like this is to, uh, enclose a hockey rink.
Yeah, I should have, I didn't know I could upload, can I hand this to you?
Oh, yeah, 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 sure.
Better than throwing it at us.
I mean, yeah. Thank you. Oh, wow.
So that's a, that's a few pictures. Um, I purchased a, a rink set from Canada, so what that includes is a 7-ton compressor and ice mats. And that kit is a standard size, so the kit is 46 by 28.
Okay. That was, that was going to be one of my questions. I said, you know, do they make these smaller where you could have accommodated it somehow, but not, it doesn't sound like, like they're standard sizes that they work in.
It's always four-foot widths. The length can be, can vary. This was an existing, so not ordering a new custom one. This was a year-old, so the, a person in Toronto had bought this, put this in their yard, they liked it so much. Their neighbors and them went in to, together to buy a bigger one, so I was able to get it at a significant discount.
At a cost savings?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, and from that cost savings, you now have expenses in the form of a new addition to your shed?
Yeah.
Or a structure in, in the back there?
A couple, yeah. So, um, this past year, what we, I did was I cut the metal siding on the back of the barn and, and put eight feet outside to be able to, to use it for this first year. And, uh, ended up selling a few pieces of equipment that we traditionally store in the barn and rented a, um, one of the roll-off storage units. So we had that for the winter, they since, um, that's been returned.
Okay. All right, so in a sense, you're trying to consolidate, so you had extra storage because you had one of those roll-off containers and now you said, okay, let's make this a little more, you know, sustainable, enclose the rink fully. Um, and in doing so, can also get back some of your storage because that was fully taken up by this rink right now?
Correct.
And then the things that were inside there, did they all fit inside the storage container or are some of those things floating around the outside still as well?
Um, some were outside still.
Okay. And then from granting this variance, would all of those things then go inside?
Correct.
And then they be out, and they be out of your yard in a sense and everything be stored in, internally? And where was the storage container placed, um, before? Is that what, is that from the aerial view?
See it on the south side of the barn, yeah.
Okay. Okay. And so in a sense, what we see on this aerial is your extension will go over the top of that rink where it's sticking out and then plus a little bit farther.
Correct. And then you could see, like, in front of the barn, there's white, I had it tarped for all winter just to try to keep things protected.
Yep.
But that's right now because, right, the rink we shut off, so all the ice mats are rolled up and I was able to move all that in, inside for right now.
Okay, and so all those things then will go back inside normally?
Correct.
Okay. Um, let's see what else I had here, if I had anything else. I think. You did have a letter of support from your neighbor at, uh, what was that?
Directly in front of the surprise.
Just the north, I can't see the number right now. It's like 1483 or something like that, I think is what it is?
Uh, yep. Um, Dave Woodward also wrote a letter and, um, on the other side is the horse farm.
Okay. Do we have the one from Dave Woodward or not?
Yes.
Did I see that? I, for some reason, I missed that one.
Let's see, you want me to read it? Short. Dear Penfield Town officials, as a neighbor to the Beals' property, I wanted to express my support for their proposed barn addition. The addition will allow them the space for the ice rink and to spend more time together as a family. Please consider this letter as an endorsement of their addition plans. Sincerely, Dave Woodward. So a nice letter.
Yep. And so he backs up, you know, he's the other property line that would share where this is, where this variance is most impacting.
He's the farm field, oh, that whole side, yep.
Okay. Um, in terms of, uh, on the exterior of this, uh, any additional lighting, things like that, they'll be facing out towards the side that's impacted with the variance?
No.
Nothing? Okay.
Nope.
Uh, and I assume it's all going to match whatever addition you do, they're not going to have two different colors and we're going to try to?
Everything will look exactly the same, just going to be bigger.
Yeah, okay. That's all I've got. Unless anyone else has questions?
George?
No, you answered, I was, I was worried about the aesthetics of having, having an add-on there. I was going to ask if there was any way he could change the direction of the expansion until I saw the, the paved driveway.
The paved driveway kind of limits that.
So I, I retracted that, that question.
You know, I know in your application, you said you're going to enjoy this for years to come, and I do appreciate that.
Yeah.
But have you given thought to, if there comes a day when you're not going to use the rink anymore, what would you use that space for?
So we do, like, there's basketball hoop, we've done pickleball, so it's.
Good for you.
We talked, you know, Andy gave great guidance because there is the option of doing a separate building. I would prefer to not have a second building that would just be a sports structure.
Yeah.
Three kids, very active, um, and just talking and talking it through and getting guidance, this was really the most, um, seemed to make the most sense to me, instead of going after a separate building and, uh, I think it'd look the best and.
Well, it's one less structure and probably a second building would actually cost a little bit more than putting an addition onto the existing structure.
Exactly.
Yeah, you know, it, it sort of reminds me of an application we had a couple of years ago where a gentleman came in for an area variance for a batting cage. And the whole neighborhood used it, so I imagine you're going to have a lot of hours of use there as well, so.
We have a lot of new friends.
Yeah. All right, so.
Can you use it year-round if it's enclosed?
Um, so if I insulated, just like a traditional ice rink, so it's the same kind of setup, um, I would need to put a lot of money into it to insulate. So right now, our season is mid-October through Easter because anytime the temperature, air temperature is under 60, under 62 is really what, what they say.
That's kind of the opposite of a pool. How long do you want to heat it for? Is how long you use it for?
I was wondering if you closed the rink the same weekend that you opened the pool.
It's like, I get zero arginine savings. As soon as I turn the pool off, we start using the rink.
Yeah, I was just, that's what I was thinking, you probably were, there's no, probably only a little overlap there.
No relief.
All right, I don't see any call-ins or electronic comments. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? All right, let's go to seeker.
Okay, I'm going to move this, uh, type 2 action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further review.
Second.
Uh, seeker motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And for the application, I'm going to move to approve the application, uh, for the requested variances, uh, for the following reasons. Uh, in terms of undesirable change to the neighborhood, by expanding this larger, it's going to look the same. Um, he's in a rural area in a sense, you know, abutted by farms. The farm owner to the one side has sent a letter in support. Uh, the neighbor in the front said, uh, has sent a letter of support already. Um, and so in a sense, when we look at, will it impact the character of the neighborhood? Well, the neighbors are saying it's not. Um, so that's, I think, one aspect to look at. Um, so being in a rural agriculture, that's in a sense, large structures like that are seen all over. Could the benefit be sought some other way? Um, I, I guess we talked about that it could be a second structure put on the property, but now we're looking at a variance for a second structure. And then I guess it's one more building that, you know, a lot of times people don't want a second building on their property because now you have to, you know, you probably have to pave an area to it, you'd have to do, you know, run electric to it, you have to do more of those things to, uh, for that infrastructure for it. So this is the, I guess, most cost-effective and appropriate way to pursue. Is the variance substantial? I said yes, uh, you know, creating a 1,200-plus square foot addition is substantial. For this, while it's a large structure already, so I guess if you look at the scale of it, it's not that much, but you know, overall, it is a large, um, request. If you're probably, I guess in a sense, if your home was larger, you wouldn't need the piece, so I guess it kind of weighs both ways. So you know, you, you kind of look at it one way or the other, you know, you, there, this, this could sit on another property with a slightly larger home and that'd be one less variance. So I sense, you know, I don't see that being a huge impact here, um, from where the home sits. Self-created, yes, of course, um, because most of these are self-created because that's what brings people here is they want to do something and they need the variance to do it here. Um, so for that, um, I'll move to approve.
I will second the motion to approve. All right, so we have a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next application, please.
David and Melanie Bowman, 51 White Hill Drive, Rochester, New York, 14625. Request approval for an area variance under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building that is larger than permitted under section 250-5.1-f12A of the code at 51 White Hill Drive. The property is currently or formerly owned by David and Melanie Bowman and is owned R-1-20. Application number 24Z-0038.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Good evening, actually. Um, can we get your name and address, please?
David Bowman, 51 White Hill Drive, Rochester, New York, 14625.
Great. Well, as always, let me start out with a good application. The information was in there, all the stuff we need to be able to make a decision, so.
That was my wife helping me.
Yep, so, so, well, okay, well, pass along the, the kudos to her then. Um, so what you're asking for is, is to replace an, an existing, um, accessory building.
Right.
Larger accessory building.
Right.
In essence, it's going to be 96 square foot larger than the maximum 192 that is allowed by code.
Well, yeah, it'd be 288, I think.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, it's, um, I'm just stating, it's, yeah, the total will be 288, but it's in essence 96 square feet larger than was allowed by the law. Gotcha.
Right.
Okay, so talk to me a little bit about, um, the need for the additional storage, what you're going to use it for.
Well, I've currently got one there now. Um, it's a plastic shed that's been there for about 10 years. Nobody's had any, any objections to it. So, um, but it's so filled up with stuff that I, I can't even move in it. So I've got a, a car and a couple motorcycles, a canoe in there and it's, I can barely move. I, I, what I really want to be able to do is work on my car inside it. Keep, you know, my tools and, and all that in there. At, at this point, I, I can't really put anything else in, I can't even move around in it. So, um, and we've only got a one-car garage right now.
Yeah, I noticed that, 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 that single-car garage kind of limits your ability.
That's why, yeah. Basically, it's because, uh, because of the single-car garage. You can see the shed that's, that's there now. I've had that for 10 years. And, uh, like I said, it's vinyl. The one I want to put up is, it's much better looking. It's wood with a, a steel roof on it and I want to paint it the same color as the house with the same color trim and everything so that it looks better.
Gotcha.
The wood one's going to look a lot better than this plastic one.
Yeah, you read my mind because the next question is, will it match the aesthetics of the house?
Much better than the one that's there now. I, my wife just showed me a, uh, an email from one of our neighbors that says that she's approved of it. I don't know if you want to see it, but.
Yeah.
But my other neighbors know what's going on too and they don't have any problem. There's been a shed there for 10 years anyways that's essentially close to the same size anyway.
Gotcha. So, uh, yes, if you could submit that email right to you, Andy?
I submitted it to the org.
What's the person's name?
Tracy Ledge.
Yeah, she's also submitted something electronically. I might as well read it now. It says, "My husband and I live directly behind this property at 51 White Hill Drive and have no issue with this variance request. We hope you can approve it." They live at 2 Park View.
Oh, yeah, that's in back, back yard, yeah.
Yeah.
And you indicated you did speak to the neighbors on, on your side and there was no indication?
They're all quite aware of it. They saw the sign out in the front and they're like, what are you doing?
So you know signs work?
I guess so. How long's the sign got to stay up? Tomorrow.
So you've committed, you know, Andy, you're going out there to take that sign down?
I'd get it down myself if I had.
Okay, good.
You're making them blush.
I saw him out there putting it up.
Excellent. So, um, I don't have any additional questions. Well, wait, wait a minute, I do have one. Will you be running electricity out to there?
No.
So there will be no lighting, no?
No.
Gotcha. Okay, Dan, do you guys have any?
No, I, I'll note that, uh, we already read the one electronic comment, excuse me, and I don't see any call-ins, so I'll ask if anybody in the audience cares to speak about this? No? Okay, then let's proceed first with the environmental.
Uh, I would say this is a type 2 seeker, requiring no additional action.
I'll second that. All right, so we have a seeker motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
On the merits, I would move to approve, um, based on a couple of things. First and foremost, the house only has a single-car garage, so the storage is limited. While it is a large extension, um, the, the placement of it, it shouldn't, it shouldn't create much of a visual difference in the one that's there right now. It will be more aesthetically pleasing, which I'm sure the neighbors will, will be happy about. And it will allow the storage needs that you have to be able to work on your car and those kind of hobby things, which I completely get.
Right.
So, um, there are a couple of things I'm going to, I want to walk through here real quick. Um, the replacement shed will be aesthetically pleasing, so it's not going to change the way it looks around the neighborhood. Um, could the benefit be achieved some other way? No, because you have a single-car garage, so there really isn't without, you'd have to either add a, a, onto the garage into the house or increase the size of the building, so there really isn't any. Um, the variance is substantial at 50%. Just so you know, that's kind of the cutoff for us, but again, based on, based on the placement where you're going to put it, I don't think it's going to, might be much of a visual change. You, you've actually received approval from the neighbor in the back and you talked to the neighbors on either side, so we know that they are, there's, there's going to be, should be no impact on the environment or, or the neighborhood as, as a whole. And basically, is this self-created? Yes, of course it is. That, as indicated, all these things are self-created, but it's also allows you kind of quality of life and, and, as well. So, uh, with all that, again, I would, um, I would submit this for approval. I'm not going to read through all of the things I read through before. You've heard them, but please make sure you follow through to get your permit and please make sure that you, you know, when you, you have it actually, the construction completed, that you get the certificate of compliance.
So I have a year.
So I have a year, right? This is good for a year?
Yes.
Right? Because I'm going to be ordering it probably in the winter and having it delivered in the spring. So I just wanted to get all my ducks in a row before I order it.
Yep, you're good for a year.
Okay, good.
Excellent.
I'll second.
Great, okay.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve in a second. Before I call for a vote, I just want to note there is another letter of support from a neighbor, Tracy Ledoux. She hand-wrote a letter and she's in full support of it as well, so that's good. All right, we have a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Oh, no, you're right. There was?
Do we come down, do I come and get the permit?
Just give a call to Andy tomorrow.
I keep pointing to Andy, yeah.
He's got the answers.
So it's one year from the date.
Yeah, the date was on the agenda. Yeah, I got to get it ready for you. I think the only thing we were waiting for was the variance, so it should be up. I will call you as soon as it's ready.
I neglected to point out that the prior application, which was number seven on the agenda at the request of the applicant, has been put off until next month. That's 1099 State Road. Okay, application number nine on the agenda.
Sarah Stymas, 95 Henderson Drive, Penfield, New York, 14526. Requests approval for an area variance under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a chicken coop and runway with less setback than permitted under section 250-5.1-G7 of the code at 95 Henderson Drive. The property is currently or formerly owned by Sarah Stymas and is owned R-1-20. SPL number 139.07-2-22. This is application number 24Z-0037.
I think our applicant is appearing virtually tonight.
I am here.
Sarah Stymas?
Yes, I am.
So my understanding of your application is that, by the way, you're, you live at 95 Henderson Drive, right? Just for the record.
Yes, my name is Sarah Stymas. I live at 95 Henderson Drive.
Thank you. That you have a chicken coop, you have pet chickens, and you have come here asking for a variance from the side setback line? And you've written a application, you've submitted some other material, but why don't you run through exactly what your request is for us?
To start, they're not backyard chickens. They're emotional support animals for my child who is disabled. You should have received a letter from St. Jude's Hospital stating that, that they are emotional support animals, not pets. So it's a different category. But I've asked for an accommodation under the Fair Housing Authority for emotional support animals to allow the coop to be located where it is for the direct disability, to accommodate my daughter's disability that she currently has, which I will not be discussing on video.
Okay, so can you explain to us a little bit about why you're here in front of the zoning board and what your request is?
My request is to accommodate a setback of a five-foot setback from the side property line for the emotional support animals that I have on my property. And they're protected under Fair Housing Authority. And I'd like to read you the code so you understand what we're speaking of because nobody in the town of Penfield understands what emotional support animals are. So under the Fair Housing Authority and Act, a reasonable accommodation or is an exchange, exception, or adjustment to a rule, policy, practice, or procedure. The Fair Housing Authority makes it unlawful to refuse to make reasonable accommodations to rules, policies, practices, or services when such accommodations may be necessary to afford persons with disabilities an equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling and public and common and private use area.
Okay, thank you for that. So based upon that and the current location of the coop, I just want to verify, you've stated that your request is for a five-foot variance?
That is correct. It was measured on October 12th, 2023 by Phil. And I have the email to prove that it's five foot from the property line.
Well, you have an email that, if I'm correct, if I'm, we're thinking about the same email that Phil's conclusion, Phil, by the way, is a town of Penfield employee. And I think the email you're referencing is an email in which he, by his measurements, thought a five-foot variance was necessary. Is that the same email you're, were we talking about the same email?
Correct, yes. And, and it's my understanding that you only have to come out and measure once, and I've confirmed that with the building inspector. But Andy Seves says, keeps referring that he needs to come out to my property. It's not on the neighbor's property as he states. And like I said, I was present when the neighbor's property was surveyed and it's not on the neighbor's property. It's five foot from the property line.
Yeah, you mentioned that today when I was out there, and I think you, you made a good point suggesting that because your neighbor recently sold, the house recently sold and in fact, I think was closing this week or scheduled to close this week and that they undoubtedly had a survey prepared. And I think, and I think you actually mentioned it, and I agree with you, that the board having that survey is something that would be helpful to the board in making its decision. So I've thought about that.
And I've already stated to Andy two months ago that he could have.
I'm sorry, I wasn't quite finished there. If you can give me a minute to finish.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Okay. Why don't, why don't we have you finish first? Go ahead.
Sure. So the reason why I cannot give you a survey with coop located on it is because it's a violation of the Fair Housing Act. You cannot charge me a fee to have service animals on my property. So you guys have put me in a position where I can't go through the process and your town attorney has told you to modify the process.
So I don't think we're talking about having you get a survey. What we're talking about, and what I believe you mentioned today.
Yeah, I was told.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. I just want to give, I want to give you an opportunity to speak and I, and I would ask that you give me.
You told me when you were on my property. You told me when you were on my property just hours ago. I didn't have a survey. And I do, I have a survey. The coop was located by Phil.
Okay.
I'm not paying for a survey. I legally cannot.
You do, you have submitted a survey as part of this application, but it is not a survey that depicts the location of the chicken coop. We all know that. We all, we agree to that. That's fine. What you and I discussed today was what I was talking about a few minutes ago, and that is that your neighbor recently sold their house and that undoubtedly as part of that sale, they created a survey. We believe, and I think you agree because you said so today, that that survey may help us ascertain the location of the chicken coop in, in regard to the property line. Therefore, hearing that your request today is for a five-foot variance, okay. My motion tonight is going to be to table this application so that we can make every attempt, either you or us or both, make an attempt to get a copy of that survey undertaken and paid for by somebody other than you and see if that helps us ascertain the exact location of that shed so that we can vote on your variance request armed with the specific information that we need to vote yes or no on a specific variance request. So that's, that's what my motion tonight is going to be. Two other board members certainly have a say and they will be allowed to vote as well. But that's what I'm going to do tonight is make that motion. But I want to make sure that, you know, other facts of the application, you're entitled to bring out, the coop is there. It's been there for, for a while and you don't intend to move it. That's fine. It's, you've stated your reasons why you believe that it's proper as it is legally and authorized by federal law. We understand your argument there. And I think we understand your argument for the variance. I assume if you were to move it, it would be expensive for you to move it. And if you were to build another one, that would be expensive too. That, that sort of speaks for itself. And you've stated your reasons for the necessity for having it, the desire to have it and to have it in its location. So I think I've heard the details of your application for the variance request and the fact that it's, it's for a five-foot variance. So I'll ask the other board members whether they have any questions of you. And if you guys have questions, go ahead and ask them.
I don't have any questions. I just have the comment that I think I agree that we'd like to know exactly what variance we need because if all of a sudden you need six foot and we grant five, then you're back to square one again already. And I'd hate to go through it all just to find out we're off by a foot or six inches or whatever. If we can say, yes, we need five foot and not five and a half feet or whatever happens to be, if, if we can obtain that sale survey from next door.
I would agree. That would be my only comment as well.
Any further comments, Ms. Stymas?
I have a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
Yes, yes. So the neighbors, the neighbor's survey is not going to show where the coop location is. Just going to state that the coop is not on their property as Andy Seves did state.
Well.
You're aware of that, right?
Even that bit of information will be helpful. And again, I think that's why, that's why you mentioned the, the thought that we get that survey today. I thought it was a really good idea. Okay, any other comments?
I mentioned it to Andy three months ago. They, they just closed on the house yesterday. They haven't moved in yet, so I don't have access to the survey.
Well, again, the town will make a request and if you want to make the same request, that's great. That's great. Anything else? Okay, I don't see any call-in comments on this application and I don't see any electronic comments or questions as well. I'll ask anyone in the audience care to speak about this application? No? Okay. All right. Well, then I am going to make, having heard the application and the request for a five-foot variance and the reasons for that, I'm going to make a motion to table the application so that the applicant and the town can have an opportunity to obtain that survey from the neighboring property that we hope will shed some light, so to speak, on this application. So that's my motion to table it.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to table and a second.